Everyone, this is the May twentieth meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission, special meeting, and I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Certainly Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is expected. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
City Council Member and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin is excused. Commissioner Gosin.
Here.
Commissioner Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner King is excused. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
Maureen, Commissioner Lord just stepped in.
Okay.
All right, wait.
I can't sit on my screen, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Stone, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That's probably the last opportunity I'll have to ambush somebody with the Pledge of Allegiance because I suspect we might be back in in person at the next meeting. On that subject, number three, Sienna, public comment, do you have any written or oral communication for it?
We do not.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, things are changing rapidly out here with this COVID stuff. Any update for us? Does it? Does it appear that we'll be back in June and in person?
You're mute. Thank you. Sorry about that. It looks like we will be back in person. Um, you know, with all the guidelines being changed, um, we will be sending out kind of the protocol for it. It 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 looks like if you're vaccine, if you have a vaccination, you may or may not wear a mask if you want to, and if you are unvaccinated, I guess you're supposed to wear a mask. Um, but we'll we'll clarify that. Um, we probably will not be sitting up. Uh, you know, at up at the council chamber chairs, we'll probably be a little more spread out. Um, but you know, Blaine and I are going to kind of finalize that next week and we'll send out something to everybody. But yes, the Zoom days look like they might be behind us now, which in a way is a good thing, but it will be a change.
Well, it is. It it normalcy returning is is going to be positive for everybody, although this has been very convenient.
It has, yes.
Thank you very much.
She she own and I have discussed that many a time that it's nice to be in your living room or wherever.
Yeah. That is true. Okay, number four, we have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll do them separately. Versus the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May third, twenty twenty one. And I asked the commissioners if you have any changes, additions, deletions. And if not, I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mayor's move. And do we have support?
Second.
Christian supports. Any discussion? The roll call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Gosin?
Yes.
King?
Absent.
He's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Lord.
Here.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the meeting minutes of the special meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty one. And again, uh, if there are no additions, deletions, et cetera, we would accept a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Moved again by the mayor and Christian, you support that again, right?
No, I yes, I do.
Okay, thank you very much. The roll call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Gosin?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Number five, consideration of the addition of portable classrooms at St. John Lutheran Church and School located at ten eleven West University Drive. Vidia.
Thank you Chairman McGee, members of the board. The applicant St. John's Lutheran Church is requesting approval to add a second portable unit with two classrooms to their existing site, which is located on the southeast southwest corner of West University Drive and Helen Avenue. The site is zoned RM one, which is multiple family residential district. A little bit of a refresher for the planning commission members on this project, just to give you a little background, so you know where this project is coming from. The applicant received site plan and special exception approval in July twenty eighteen for the construction of a twenty nine thousand square foot addition to the church and school building and significant renovation to the existing building. In May of twenty nineteen, the applicant reappeared before the planning commission. Uh, because of some construction management, project management challenges, the project had got delayed. At the time, the applicant had new enrollment in their school, resulting in a shortage of classroom space for their students. They proposed the addition of a fifteen hundred square foot portable temporary classroom on the site. When we conferred with the city attorney, the city attorney made a determination that the portable classrooms can be deemed as accessory structures to the principal use on the site, which is the church and the school itself. So the planning commission granted site plan approval for those portable classrooms to be on the site for a period of one year, and they also set a condition that if a second year was required, which the church had requested at the time, that they would have to come back for an extension. In mid twenty twenty, which was last year, May twenty twenty, the applicant appeared before the planning commission with a request for another year's extension, which was granted. At the time, the applicant did state their intent to comply with the originally approved site plan from July of twenty eighteen. Now churches and schools are permitted a special exception uses in the RM one district. At this time, the applicant is requesting approval to add a second portable unit with two classrooms to the site. I will pull up the site plan on this thing, so. So this is the existing portable classroom that was previously approved. The applicant is requesting approval of the second unit to be placed to the south of the previously approved unit. The original site plan for the site was was to be implemented in two phases. Phase one included installation of this portable classroom, all of the previously approved landscaping, with the exception of the area where a future expansion was supposed to be. All of the lighting, fencing, the front plaza area up here, the detention and engineering. It's our understanding that phase one has been completed in its entirety. Phase two included construction of the building addition, which is supposed to go in here, and improvements to the sidewalk area that immediately abandoned this area. In a letter that is dated nineteenth of April of this year, the executive pastor of the church, Reverend Graff, has stated that the pandemic has caused delays in the construction, resulting in the previously soft construction bids becoming void. We are all we are all aware that the cost of construction materials has significantly gone up in the past year. The school apparently received an influx of students last fall when the public schools shut down, and the anticipated student increase is expected for the next school year, resulting in the need for the second portable classroom. The letter states that they still intend to comply with the previously approved plan. However, they have to restart the entire bid and the construction process all over again. There is no timeframe provided for the completion of construction or for the removal of the portable units with the latest letter that has been submitted. There are no changes proposed to vehicular access on this plan. With regard to pedestrian access, the sidewalk was installed as part of the approval of the first portable unit with a sidewalk connection on the west side of the building. With the addition of a second portable unit, the sidewalk is being extended between the two buildings, and it a new sidewalk connection is also being provided at this end. Each of these units will have two means of access, north, south, north and south. Parking on the site has been constructed in compliance with the originally approved site plan and no changes are proposed at this time. The lighting for the site includes the light poles that were previously approved and complied. Uh, we do need clarification whether any light fixtures will be installed on the portable unit. The addition of the unit is and lighting to it is significant because all of this is single family residential area. So if there are any fixtures to be installed, the applicant needs to make sure that they are downward directed shielded, and a cup sheet detail of the fixture needs to be provided to city administration before they are installed. No changes to dumpster or landscaping are proposed at this time. With this said, the applicant has not provided architecture for the proposed portable classroom, but they did mention that it's going to be identical to the previous unit that was installed. Based on the information that we had previously received, the structure has a maximum height of sixteen feet, the peak of the roof. The unit has two classrooms with bathrooms and will be provided with ADA accessible ramps. The proposed colors of the portable unit are designed to match the brick and the ethos on the existing church and the future addition. There's no additional changes to signage proposed on the site. So at this time, uh, we understand the applicant's need for an additional classroom with the construction cost going up. It is understandable that they probably have to go out for bids and get the construction estimates all in and probably hire a new management company. However, the concern arises from the fact that the project was originally approved in twenty eighteen and we are heading, we are in the middle of twenty twenty one, and the addition is still not in place or not even started, the construction piece. So the planning commission at this time has got several options for action on this project. Either you approve the request or the second portable classroom as requested with no time period on its removal, or you can approve the request for the second portable classroom with a stipulated time limit within which both the units have to be removed. Or you can approve the request for the second portable classroom and require a bond for the completion of the original site plan, ensure that these units do not become permanent accessory structures. The applicant has referred to them as temporary. The zoning ordinance interpretation by the city attorney was they can be deemed as accessory structures. Don't want these to become permanent accessory structures. Planning commission has required bonds on a few recent projects for the exact same reasons. Therefore, a precedent does exist for acquiring this bond. And your fourth and final option would be deny the request for the second portable classroom. I would be happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Vidia at this time? Vidia, remind us again on the classroom that's there now, what is the time attached to it?
The classroom was originally approved in May of twenty nineteen for a one year time. That one year time period expired in May of twenty twenty, at which time they got an extension for one year. So technically, the approval of that first unit expires this month. Uh, I was a little surprised that they did not ask for an extension on the original portable unit at this time. Uh, I'm assuming, uh, Pastor Mark can correct that over here. If an extension is needed for the original unit, I'm assuming it is, but it wasn't part of this. It wasn't mentioned on the letter, but it's it's expired as of this.
Okay. Uh, Nick and and Blaine, I just wonder from the administrative point of view, has there been any problem with the operation of this current classroom building?
Absolutely none.
Okay, thank you. All right, how about at this time, Reverend, uh, we turn the floor over to you and and let you bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, yes, we first of all, thank you again for for inviting us back and allowing us to to come and share tonight. We have, we've all been affected by COVID. I think that's that's a reality. We have been affected not only in the ways that have been painful and and difficult, but also in ways that we never would have expected in the blessings that have been coming our way. Uh, to say a year ago that we would have such an influx of students that we would have to bring on an additional three teachers for next year uh, because the the students were already enrolled and we still needed the space for them. Uh, would have said you're crazy and and yet that's where we're at. Um, we have the students are already here. We're in the the faith business. This was the easiest step of faith we've ever made in terms of uh, coming up and and desiring a a plan to how do we accommodate on short term uh, students that are already here. We are five years ahead of our projections in terms of enrollment uh, as of last month, and uh, this is an exciting opportunity for us. We are so excited on that, but we also know it brings some challenges on the building, planning side of things. We have no interest whatsoever in becoming a trailer park. I guarantee you of that. We've spent close to five million dollars on our site plan so far, and we have plans to continue moving forward on that master plan when time and and resources allow and and global pandemics aside, and that the ability to raise the funding for that to make all of those future phases happen in their good timing. We're we're behind schedule on that, admittedly so. Um, we had suspect we're probably not alone in that dynamic. That being said, the children are are enrolled, the teachers are hired, we need the space. Um, this is a double classroom, so currently the one that is on site is is a double classroom, so this makes the four outdoor classrooms in those mobiles. Um, and we are currently working on some interior spaces for additional classrooms to accommodate uh, the students for next year. So it's it's a combination of the two. Um, there's a lot riding on these decisions tonight, so we we appreciate you hearing us out on that. With that, I want to turn it over to Terry to talk about any other details involved with that.
Well, again, thank you for everyone for listening to us. Uh, I think the major thing is these classrooms are absolutely identical in color and shape and size as the two we already have. So looking at it from the south, uh, nobody would know there's two more. Uh, you'd have to look at it from east or west. Uh, I don't know what else really to say. There it's a situation we had not planned on, but to accommodate the students and the uh, the need for education. I think all of you have children, you know how important an education is. So I I'm hoping that we have a positive response. We certainly had a positive response from parents and students who want to attend class here.
And a caveat I would add to the Vidia's comments, um, if we could include in the motion tonight, the extension of the uh, permission to use the other one for another year as well, we'd appreciate that.
Any questions for the Reverend? Vidia, I I'm not hearing any objections to this, and I think we want to see this move forward. But I I think both the city and the and the uh, applicant need the discipline of a time limit here. And I don't know exactly what that should be, but I I'm not, probably not supportive of doing something indefinitely.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I was in and I don't know the answer to this, so I'll ask it to you and and anyone else who might have an answer. Is it possible to do some type of extension, like, you know, ninety days and then come back for a status report or something to to update the commission as to as to where things are, so it's not indefinite, but it still gives them some time to to manage their facility and and plan for the future?
Probably could do ninety. I was thinking more like six months or even a year.
Yeah, I just threw ninety out for.
I don't want them to have the burden to have to keep coming back all the time. I we know, we know where they're heading, and I
Sure.
trust that when the time comes, there will be permanent buildings built there.
Well, that's our, our intention is obviously to build permanent buildings.
Yes.
I backed into some construction and uh, starting from scratch, building, building is at least twelve months. Probably more fourteen or fifteen months. And of course, we have to raise the funds first to consider that. So I think we're looking at if if we have this uh, coming year uh, to plan and raise funds, it'd be second year, uh, be construction.
And to clarify that too, the fundraising side of that, when we had come before you a year or so ago to approve phase two to move forward, that was part and parcel on our side of going forward with a fundraising initiative to make that possible at the same time, and that's when COVID hit, right as we were about to launch into construction simultaneously with funding. So a lot of things got derailed at the same time. And so we're we're trying to catch up, and we will. Uh, we have every intention to do so.
Nick, you know, this is a single family subdivisions located in, are you hearing any complaints from the neighbors about appearance or anything like that?
Absolutely not, no, because they did all the work. They did the parking lot and the landscaping all the landscaping out in the front, and they keep it perfect every day. So actually, we've heard just the opposite. People very supportive of the church. It's good, it's a breath of fresh air. Someone told me, you know, I live right there, so I walk there all the time to see it looking as good as it does right now. Nobody's even mentioned the trailers. They're so far back, like Pastor and Terry said, you can't see it from the road. It's built on the Crichton side, and I agree. We don't need to do this every year. It's to be real, it's going to be two years. I mean, I don't see our community sooner than that, so if you want to do a year and come back in a year for an update, that's fine, but um, it's up to you all, but realistically, it's not bothering anybody. It's clean and we're good to go.
How about, uh, I'm just talking, two years, but ask for a report at a year. But not necessarily appearance, but at least a report to the administration that you can present to us with an update on where things are.
I talked to Terry about once every two weeks, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
No, absolutely not.
Well, anyone?
Yeah, okay.
Dean?
Yeah, I guess I've got a question for the city attorney. Um, what what risk are we at that uh, that these structures become permanent, and how do we stop that?
Well, there's, I mean, that's a good question. That the the issue is that you've granted it for, if you grant it for a period of time, say the two years, uh, they would not have, uh, you could revoke the, you know, the occupancy agreement or the, excuse me, occupancy permit as to those um, units, and they wouldn't be able to use them. Um, the I know the planner mentioned a a bond for the removal. Um, I think that that's not uh, an unreasonable uh, request um, for that. Um, you know, just I don't know what that that number would be, just because I don't know what the cost would be to remove a trailer. I think the church has been uh, uh, open and uh, open communication as far as their intent, so I I wouldn't expect them to force the city to, you know, have a bond to remove those trailers, but um, I I think the risk is 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 low because the approval is going to be what's planning commission approved, which is for a period of time. If it's the two years that I just heard, um, then they would, you know, they would need to be removed by then, or they'd be in violation of the ordinance, and we can proceed under the uh, under the ordinance for violation of the approved site plan.
Reverend, are you renting these uh, structures or did you purchase them?
They're leased.
Okay, so with the lease, that company handles them, brings them to the site, hooks them up, and and they would also be contracted to remove them, so.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Dean?
So if they're leased, and again, maybe this is a question for the attorney, um, would the city have the authority to um, require the company they're leased from to remove them?
We we wouldn't have, uh, we wouldn't have any direct um, communication with the the company. We're not a party to that. It would be purely a a uh, an action by the city as to the church itself. Um, you know, whatever their arrangement is with the the company is theirs. Um, they, you know, they, there's a violation of the ordinance that we would uh, have to pursue. They for sure couldn't use it if the city revoked the uh, uh, the certificate of occupancy as to those units, so um, I I wouldn't say that that we would have any dealings with the the company itself. Um, our our issue would be with the uh, with the property.
So I guess I I guess my my thought would be that um, I'd prefer that there be some sort of bond in place so that regardless of what may happen in the future, we would have the ability to uh, clean up the site and um, keeping in mind that, you know, I know COVID is a thing that everyone's had to deal with, but uh, you're talking about two thousand eighteen approvals with a possible extension for two years gets us into uh, twenty twenty three, we're talking five years from approval, and these structures are still going to be there. Um, I just don't want there to be another five years after that for various reasons, so.
Since we probably don't know tonight what the cost of removal might be, could we maybe add that in the motion that there be a bond and let the administration uh, set with that amount is, once we find out what the cost of removal is, company ought to be able to tell us that.
It's about seven thousand dollars to remove it.
Per building?
Per per building, yes.
So Dean, you want to try a motion, maybe put fifteen thousand dollar bond in there?
Yeah, yeah, make a motion uh, for uh, approval, extension on the original and um, uh, a uh, well, I guess it would be a two-year extension at this point, and an and uh, an approval for the um, addition of a second unit, uh, double unit that would uh, have a uh, a two-year timeline for return to council on update um, with a fifteen thousand dollar removal bond. In the event.
There's more.
So so are they, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So are they going to, is the church going to come back in a year with a progress report as well?
Oh, Dean, would you mind adding that, that they give a written report to the administration at a year?
That's fine.
Okay, got that, Maureen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
A second, though?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you want to support that?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I I support this. I'm glad that you know, you're getting more students, if if that's the if that's the plan that you wanted. Um, we understand there's COVID and things, but I think that, you know, I think we need to see some some progress. And I mean, I think you guys understand that, and I I know it's hard, but so just, you can't go indefinitely.
Well, I I just want to mention that we don't want to go indefinitely.
Right, absolutely.
We're a good neighbor and uh, we've got a good relationship with the city, and our intention is to build a permanent structure and has been from the beginning, so uh, that's where we're going.
And we do encourage you to drive through, see what we're talking about sometime soon, because it it doesn't look bad, and we don't want to keep those structures there, and nor does our clientele. I mean, when we we talk about new families coming in, they're not dreaming that we continue to have mobile classrooms on site. That's not our long-term plan, so understood.
Very good, thank you.
So we have a motion and support. Are there any other, is there any other discussion? Uh, Matt?
Hey Dennis, so I'm a member of the church. I will have to uh, recuse myself from any vote here.
Understand you have done that before. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you, sir.
Maureen, the roll call, please.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Gosin?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, and continued good luck and success.
Thank you very much.
Bless you guys.
Okay, the next item is number six. Discussion regarding the redevelopment of the preserves of Rochester located at one hundred South Street. Uh, Vidia, are you are you up to speed on this or?
Chairman McGee, this is going to, Nick will probably give an introduction, and then Mr. Lacherco is on leaving, he will be presenting his project.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we went over this last time. We're very aware of the conversation about, you know, bringing discussion items, if they're not ready, if they're ready, bring them, if they're zoned properly, bring them. This is purely a special project, special projects still do exist. At this time, we have not changed that district, um, changed that process yet. Um, Mr. Lacherco was here years ago looking for a special project to build a multiple family project on just a piece of the property, which we refer to as the old cement plant, is now purchased Van Horns. Van Horns is uh, either they're closed or they're vacating the site. Mr. Lacherco will go over all of that. So because this is not proper zoning, it's still zone industrial, uh, we did a couple of things. We met with the fire chief, police chief, I believe, and we talked about the site plan, and then we had Vidia send Mr. Lacherco the River Valley zoning classification. So if in fact we ever get to that they would know what deficiencies, if there are were any that might exist, if we went down that road to that just other than that, it's zone industrial. The only way it could be developed was would be with a um, special project. So again, before they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on drawings, um, because it's a special project, and he's been down this road before, we're bringing him forward to you for discussion tonight with some direction, and then you can make a decision to move forward and submit for full site plan approval under the special projects criteria.
Mr. Chairman? If I may just add to what Nick said, we had a discussion because the planning commission did not want concept plans to come before them. Uh, this is a project of pretty significant. Uh, this is a project of pretty significant scope, and the previous project that was proposed by them, South Street Plats, was denied. Like Nick said, the site is zoned industrial, plus it's a brownfield site. It literally cannot be developed for much under its current zoning, so any. Uh, new project that comes in, that is in our master plan vision. Uh, needs to be, come in as a special project at this time until the special project is taken off, maybe in the next round of the master plan. I did make sure to share the River's Edge District. That was the district that the planning commission designed for this site. It was the first of the zoning districts we had adopted and we had spent a significant amount of time on it. So the intent was that if ever special projects are abolished and. Projects are required to comply with whatever the zoning is on there. This project will try and comply with the zoning on there. It'll be a compliance site. So the applicant is making every effort to meet, once a special project. Overlay is also taken off, they will still comply with what our zoning will be. Uh, even though the master plan is being revisited at this time, we believe the River's Edge District is not going to undergo much change when you. Re-review it because it was a very well-written and thorough district. So I just wanted to give a brief.
Thank you, Vidia. And the, the last time we had this discussion, you pointed out. The section of the ordinance that encourages or allows an applicant to come in. Prior to find our formal site plan submission, to discuss these things, and I think things of this. Magnitude need that, that type of time and, and, uh, and flyspecking before we get. To the point of an official review, so I think this is valuable time spent. Nick, who, uh, will be speaking here?
Mr. Joe Lacheco and Paul, I think, is there. Get my seat with him.
Right.
And then they are right down at the bottom of my screen here.
Good evening, gentlemen. The, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, for this opportunity, uh. Uh, we have the preserves of Rochester and we have, uh, put together, um, just. A quick overview of what we have envisioned for the property and, um. You know, it, it took, uh. I think a total of about eight years to acquire, you know, three parcels that were put together, and so there's a lot of challenges on the parcel, but, uh. I, I think you'll see, uh, Jim, uh, will be doing a presentation of the project, but how to take advantage of. 1,100 feet on the Clinton River that, uh, can become something that everybody can, uh, enjoy and. Respect the, um. The preserves of Rochester, the special piece of, uh, property and how we, um, kind of. From our first time with all, uh, apartments and large buildings to, uh, what we've come up with, uh, now. And so I will, uh, turn it over to Jim and he can, uh, kinda give you a presentation, then we can answer any questions that you, uh, that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Jim Epping. I'm a land planner, a landscape architect. Uh, located in Clarkston, Michigan. I've had, uh, the pleasure to do a number of different projects over the year in the city of Rochester, so. Good to see you again. Appreciate your time. We won't keep you long. It's, it's a great night. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share my screen for just a few minutes.
Fire away, uh, Jim, fire away.
I'm not sure if that worked. Probably just seeing my Zoom screen.
Yeah.
Hang on, I apologize. All right. That better, sir?
Yes, sir, we got you.
Right. Well, I, I've, I've had the pleasure of working with Joe and his team. Paul is a project manager leading it. Uh, we've got some great architects as well as Noeck and Fraus, uh, is, is the lead engineer. And, um, you know, with any challenging site. It really requires a tremendous amount of homework upfront, uh, which of course means, uh, uh, time and investment, but. Um, I, I think what I, what I, what I look at is from a benefit from the city as well as from, uh, the applicant's point of view is. Um, we, we've studied it exhaustively. We've done literally hundreds of design alternatives. Uh, because it's not as simple as just saying, hey, wouldn't it be great if we could do this, but it really becomes an environmental. Uh, design, uh, and understanding of how the floodway, how the flood plain, how the river, uh, works, as well as, is how your community works, how the city works. Um, it's just a fantastic location in terms of, uh, literally, I think, when we are, uh, completed with the project, we'll have. Uh, homes within the, the development that can look out and literally feel like they're up north and yet. Uh, take a two-minute walk and be right in downtown Rochester at the restaurants and at work and so forth. Um, as you, as you had mentioned, and as Nick and Vidia mentioned, we've got just a five-acre site composed of three different parcels, all of which are zoned industrial right now. The Van Horn property or, uh, uh, facility is still located, that's winding down or, or perhaps completely wound down. Obviously, that'll be removed. Um. All businesses are good businesses in, in Rochester, but I think we're at the point now where it'll be nice not to have the traffic and the trucks from this location coming. Uh, out into the city, um, and, and have what I would consider more of a gentle use for the site. Take advantage of its location, take advantage of that 1,100 square foot or linear foot of, of river frontage and adjacencies to the trail and so forth. Uh, another unique point on the property is we are right on the southern boundary. Of Rochester and then the northern boundary of Rochester Hills, so the property immediately adjacent to our south is Rochester Hills. This property is vacant. Um, um, we don't, based on its, its land configuration, uh. How that property works, some of its environmental, uh, situation, we don't anticipate that being developed, but we are. Uh, allowing, because of an easement, we are allowing, uh, potential future access to that, although, uh, we don't, we don't foresee anybody else. Ever developing that, but, but I don't know that for certain. In terms of site plan, and we submitted what would be, I guess, maybe a, a fairly full submittal package for you. Uh, again, understanding that we're hoping for a discussion, hoping for feedback, obviously, uh, not requesting any action tonight, but, but looking for some direction. Um, and so we've provided a lot of details. In general, what we are, are doing is, is. Um, working very closely with that River's Edge proposed, uh. Uh, zoning language that's in the master plan. Uh, Vidia and Nick spent a lot of time with us going through some of that. We read it and frankly, it just makes sense. It, it seems to be a well-thought-out, well, uh, focused ordinance specifically on this area. Uh, it talks about assembling these lower areas with the recognition that there is, there is an encumbrance from a floodplain and a floodway. Um, and then looking at different mixed uses for the site. The River's Edge does look specifically at, uh, the inclusion of office and even, uh, high-tech R and D type, as well as housing, uh, in addition to that. At this point, because of, uh, of COVID and because of the market with office. We just don't think that really for the foreseeable future, that there is gonna be much of a market for office. Uh, and, and, and likewise, we, we started to look at some of the traffic counts and, and things like that, and what even a small amount of office might do, and, and. Our opinion would be that, that, uh, even if the economy was ready for, for office, which again, we don't think it will be for, for new office for quite some time. Um, we again, Joe again, uh, looked at some developments, proposals in the surrounding areas, some of his from the past and said. Why don't we, why don't we go with that gentle approach, provide a mixed-use housing development? And, uh, maybe first and foremost, be very, very. Yeah, sensitive to the floodway, to the land, and try and create more of a park-like setting. And so that's what we're proposing here tonight. Is to develop, uh, 59 units. It would be, uh, 20, I'm, I'm sorry, 27 townhomes, which we'll go through in just a minute. And then one apartment building, a rental apartment building, which again, the, the River's Edge, uh, specifically mentions is an ideal use for this site. One apartment building with four floors of, of, uh, apartments, 32 units, and then a ground floor, uh, below those four floors of. Of interior parking that was surrounding parking, so. Conceptually about 22 to 25 parking spots inside and then parking around the perimeter of the building as well. From a site plan point of view. Again, it really began with engineering. Um, Noeck and Fraus and their team looked carefully and said, calculated. Uh, given the floodway, given the floodplain, obviously, we can't, um, disturb that or, or, um, lessen it. But we do have the ability, at least as it relates to, uh, some of the detention issues, to reshape it and make it more efficient. And so what we're proposing on the five-acre site is really to focus the development in this easternmost two and a half acres. And then create a, a really nice, uh, rivers trail down the southern side of the river. Obviously, we've got the larger trail along the north. Connected into the sidewalk system, extend the sidewalk system. Right now, we do have a sidewalk over the bridge, so all of a sudden, we can get. Additional connectivity through the city, have a, a trail that at least, uh, gets people on the southern side of the river and takes them through here. Uh, still an awful lot of vegetation, which this graphic isn't showing, but an awful lot of this, the vegetation will remain along the river. Well, the ability to then, uh, create a, uh, uh, storage pond, uh, that'll hold some of that, uh, water in a permanent location. There'll be fountains in here, allow the landscape along the sides to really naturalize. Our hope would be that this would. Certainly from a perimeter and from a vegetation point of view, uh, obviously remain beautiful, but very much go back to nature in terms of its, its environment. And then, of course, the surrounding green space. How that looks on the land, and I think this might help with a little bit more context. Um, we see this as a very, very green plan. Again, only 59 units. Uh, the homes would come in on what will look, feel and function like a street with some parallel parking, curbs. Um, uh, benches, sidewalks, pick up some of the cues in your main street design and bring those into the main street of this development. Uh, just a short street that comes in here would turn into what'll essentially become a shared driveway. And these townhomes would, will be rear-loaded, so the fronts of the townhomes face this street. And then the fronts of the townhomes to the north face out onto the river and face out onto the trail. Uh, these townhomes again will face into this really kind of up north feel of over the water. Uh, looking down right into the, to the Clinton River Park or Clinton River Trail and the rest of the natural areas. Uh, the apartments again, uh, the, the, the River's Edge talks specifically about what the view will be from the. Uh, bridge and from the, the higher point, uh, in the city. And so we, we've looked at not only the arrangement, but as we get further into architecture. Uh, the roof lines, how we treat the roof, some of the activity even on the roof as it relates to the townhomes becomes very, very interesting. Um, and really just a kind of a, a fun, exciting, energetic and, and, and. Quite a nice place to live, as I say, just, just moments from the street or from the city. In terms of architecture, um, we've got Dan Martinez and his team as the architects. This is a drawing that, uh, that we've identified as something that inspires us. Um, this is, this is, uh, similar to the drawings that you see from a conceptual point of view in the packet that we submitted. Uh, but both the apartment structure and the townhome structures, uh, we see is really kind of a, a high-end urban feel. Um, again, we're gonna go much, much further into architecture and the materials and the style. Uh, but we envision the townhomes to be three-story units, uh, even with some type of an actual optional home office or entertainment area with, with, uh. Uh, open patios, uh, kind of that, that, uh, Chicago feel, that, that, uh, real. Energy urban feel that, that obviously Rochester has become so synonymous with.
Would they be for purchase, the townhomes?
Townhomes would be for purchase, correct. Uh, we would anticipate these being, uh, for sale units, and then obviously the apartments would be.
Thank you.
Uh, my only last slide, Mr. Chairman, is just, just, uh, the nuts and bolts of some of the engineering, which we can go through. Uh, should those questions arise, but again, our intent here was to, um, let you know what Joe and Paul and, and our team have been up to. Really for the last eight years as we assemble these, um, what has happened since the last application and what our intent is. And then, um. As we ju- jump in and as Banda pointed out, uh, it really is at the point where it's, it's a commitment on the development team to. Uh, roll our sleeves up and start spending some real time and some real money and come back to you with a beautiful product. Uh, we're eager to do that, but we'd love, uh, any early insight that you might be able to share on this short notice.
So Vidia, this would have to be a special project or a rezoning?
This is a special project, Chairman. It, it, the special project. Umbrella is still on it since it's industrial. The applicant will be asking for special projects approval. It'll go through the same process.
Okay. And did I hear you say it's a brownfield site?
It is because it currently is occupied by the Van Horn Building Site and its previous use was industrial, so. Um, I'm not sure, maybe the applicant can clarify. I do know they mentioned, Mr. Epping mentioned previously that they did a phase one and phase two environment. Please correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe they can provide an update of any contaminants found in the site and if any, clean up the supply.
Paul, Joe, do you have the details on that?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, sure. The area where the, uh, development is occurring, uh, which was purchased, what, eight years ago, Joe, or whatever, that's a completely cleaned site. Uh, the Van Horn piece, which was just recently purchased, just maybe two months ago, has some, uh, very minor contamination. And, uh, we're working through the process of, uh, seeing, you know, how to remove it and take it off-site. And, um. I, I mean, whatever we do will be, uh, beneficial to the river, to the community, so there is some very minor contamination there.
So things relative to, uh, a truck storage repair operation? I mean, that kind of stuff, oil or?
Yeah, it's, you're exactly right, yeah. Very minor, uh, where the building is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, commissioners, uh, questions for these folks?
Can we maybe have the petitioner put the site plan back on again?
Sure. Absolutely.
So, Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question. So are, is, is the developer going to go for a brownfield site? Or are they just gonna clean it up on their own?
Our intent would be to clean it up and to, uh, come in for the special use, uh, very strongly nearing the River's Edge.
But it's not dependent on being a brownfield site?
No, I, I. I, I do not think we're gonna be eligible for a brownfield site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I guess I, I can go first if no one else.
Go ahead, Eric.
I too. Uh, I guess my, my gut reaction is I think it's a great, uh, reuse of the site. Um, obviously, uh, uh, the, the concern is gonna be the architecture, it's gonna be the view angles. Uh, from the bridge, you know, what's going on on the roof, um, some of that activity I think is gonna be important to. For us, um, but, you know, in general terms, I like the use, um. I'm curious if that, if the trail that's coming through along the river, I'm assuming it's sort of the community benefit, if you will. Um, if there's any potential, if there's been any discussion about, uh, poti- potential continuation, um, of that trail. I know, I believe that might be Rochester Hill as we're, as we're moving forward, but, um. That, that could be something nice in the future as, um, you know, as you go south and west there along the river.
Yeah, we certainly would be open to a continuation. You're right in saying that that goes into Rochester Hills, but. Um, yes, we, we think it's gonna be a great community benefit. I, I should say, we're up in the corner, we anticipate this to really be. Not only a trail, but, but a nice little pocket park with benches and some lighting. We've also identified, uh, and we of course work with, with you and the city. Uh, the opportunity to put, that we would put a welcome to Rochester sign, uh, in the corner, because it really does become that gateway as we come around that curve, so. A great little pocket park right in the corner, right along the river, and then, uh, certainly a trail through our property and, uh, the ability to go down.
Yeah, I don't know if, um, I guess one comment, uh, something to maybe clarify with, uh, the fire chief. I don't know if. There'd be any concern with, with access there, emergency access over, uh. Uh, you know, as you go into the townhouses there and kind of cut to the west, uh, if that's any concern of getting in and out of there, but, um. You know, all things I think that you can, you can iron out. Um, but in general, I really like, uh, I like, I like what I see here. You'll obviously have a fair amount of work to do with the floodplain. You know, compensation that you're dealing with there. I know it's, it looks like it's approximate right now. I don't know if you guys have engaged a study, an actual study yet to determine the floodplain elevation, or if. You know, what we saw on the topo is just the kind of FEMA map over, and, and that's about it at this point.
Now, we, we have, uh, we have completed a great deal of.
Now, we, we have, we have completed a great deal of, of engineering, fieldwork as well as calculation. So again, because of the, just the complexity of the site, no controversies probably. You know, from an engineering point of view, well into what would normally happen during final engineering, having this preliminary conceptual idea. Because, you know, obviously we want to know what we work with, want to know from the land use area, what has to be compensated for and what is, is the billable area. So certainly there's a lot more engineering to happen, but we've got great confidence. I also had just, you brought up your fire marshal, your fire, fire chief is really just terrific. And Nick and Vidya bring the fire chief in very early, so we've already met with the fire chief. Obviously, conceptual, obviously there'll be additional reviews. But he was able to provide some insight and look at the radiuses, help us refine a little bit. So I certainly won't speak for the fire department, but we are working closely with them and that's, of course, our key concern.
That's great. I guess my last comment is just obviously, you know, I'm sure the, the discussion of traffic I'm sure will come up. You know, there's, there's a few choke points, you know, that, that surround the area here. So interested to hear, hear your take on that. But otherwise, I think it's, I think it's great. I look forward to a little more detail.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Gassen, how about your architectural eye here?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My initial thoughts are just based on the use. I like the idea of townhomes. I'm curious if the imaging that was shown was representative of the apartment building or more of the. Townhomes, really with the question, is that a three-story townhouse or is that? Just a imaging representation of what might be there from a look standpoint?
This is, so we submitted, may I take one at a time, Mr. Gassen? So this represents our inspiration for a townhome. We think we have, we are not as far along in the architecture, the conceptual art of the apartments, but we know for sure that these buildings will complement. And blend together. So this is our inspiration for a three-story plus of option for a fourth space on the, on the roof level. We did submit architectural plans and elevations for the conceptual submission for tonight's meeting. Those were done by Dan Martinez and this team for the initial concept for this site. And so you'll see if you compare this image, frankly, we just didn't have those images colored up. So we thought that this showed a little bit better for tonight's meeting. But if you, you'll, you'll hold up the drawings that we've submitted next, you'll see a great deal of similarity. Similarity in terms of massing articulation on the building, materials and colors and so forth.
Okay, thank you for that. The, the other comment was it sounded like maybe the. The influence of current day office use decline. Moves the overall development as a mixed use of residential types versus a mixed use of. Residential and other like office. And I wonder if, and when I look at the site plan, I see that apartment building is a very standalone element of the site plan. If, if that weren't developed as, call it as one single phase of a project and that was phase two. Would mixed use of differing types versus differing types of residential? You know, if we were looking in our crystal ball to see what the future marketplace for office or something R and D like. Were different? Could that be reserved for a different use versus apartment living? That's, that's just a question. I'm, I'm not thinking that's a necessity, but. I thought I heard the motivation of it all being residential based on today's marketplace of what offices are. So that would be a little hesitation for me based on what the river's edge is intended for. The other thing was, I, I know there, the hard line on the property to the south. Geometry kind of dictates the shape of that detention. Which to me, when we talk about natural features, that almost becomes a conflicting visual thing. I almost want it to be more natural and I know it's a detail, but it stands out to me as I look at that. That's just an item. And the other thing, the, the walkway along the river, wonderful idea. It just seems like it's going to fall short of implementation or real use because it's the dead end or a return loop. So either continuation somewhere or something that gets you back to the start point without just reversing. Seems like it would be a good idea to explore more. Those are my initial thoughts, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm encouraged that something's come forward and I like the residential townhome element. I'm really not, I'm going to hold off on saying anything more about apartments versus something else. But I'm anxious to see what the next level of detail looks like.
Thank you, David. Christian, Matt?
I think conceptually it's, it's nice. I, you know, I. When I look at this, I, I try and think of what's there now versus what's the proposal. And I think it's going to be, you know, you're hard pressed to say that this certainly isn't an enhancement and a better use of, of what's there right now. So for me, I, I preliminarily, I think it's very nice. I think it's certainly aesthetically pleasing. The renderings of those townhouses, you know, if that's the style that they're looking for. I think it generally fits with the character and, you know, the, the aesthetic of that area. And I'm certainly interested to see more and I would, you know, be, be encouraged to, to have them come back with, with. More robust details and plans of how they're going to move this forward.
Thank you.
So I, I would echo what Christian has voiced. I like the improvements. Question the parking. I wonder the apartment building, are those folks parking in an open aired spaces? Are those envisioned to be carports? Other just things running through my mind, how are you lighting them? This has become an issue in the city. You know, I don't know if you guys have read prior meeting minutes from the last, call it three months worth of meetings that this planning commission has had. But I would encourage you to review those on apartment complex lighting and issues brought forward to this board. But otherwise, I, I, I agree with what Christian said. I like the improvements. I do think the triangular detention pond is. An interesting shape that can be improved, but I, I understand that this is a. One of the first one hundred or so passes, so.
Thank you. I, I want to pick up on the comment David made about the trail. And if I understand correctly, the detention pond is going to be sculpted. It's, it's more a matter of volume and how you get it on the site. So it could be any shape that you want it to be. And I, I just see a missed opportunity to not have more townhomes along that stretch of river. Now, you could have topo and, you know, soils problems that prevent you from doing that and we can hear, hear about that later. But I just kind of like the thought of, you know, somehow or another making the pond like oblong and coming. A little bit further south and running more east and west. Just, just a thought in terms of the aesthetics of the site and the real prize here is the frontage on the river. So I just ask you to think that through and, and determine whether or not you can, you can take more advantage of it. Because it would just be a fantastic, I don't know, how long is that? Five hundred feet along the?
About eleven hundred feet.
But I mean, the, the frontage on the river that's alongside the pond, there's probably half of it.
Correct.
And it seems like you're missing, seems like you're missing a great opportunity there.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and certainly on Mr. Gassen's points about the pond. You know, from an engineering point of view, you're right, we're at that stage where we're trying to just say, hey, this is the volume we need. But, but that needs to be sculpted and I, I like pretty much the idea of. Being able to really circle the whole development and link it out to the sidewalks again on diversion with the trail. We'd love to, to take advantage of some additional frontage and, and we won't give up on that, Chair. I think that's a very good point. See if we can swing those up. There are, there is obviously topography and lowlands and we've got to make sure the floodway stays close to the river. And that was our thought with these buildings that, that go north and south here is that. Once this pond is appropriately shaped and sized, they really will have an ideal view as well. Not right on the river, but across this, this new body of water and out the river. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Vidya, are you still on? Any, any inside input for us at this point?
No, Chairman McGee, we, as Mr. Eppen mentioned, Nick, myself, the fire chief. We met with the applicant a few weeks ago to go over the project and the details of the project. We believe they, it is, they have taken the feedback from the failure of their last project on the site and come back with a much better product. I think the townhouses along the riverfront are an excellent addition. It provides for the kind of housing type that the city would really like. They are still investigating with, the circulation was significantly discussed. Traffic was also discussed. We made the applicant aware that traffic has always been a concern on every project that has come through. And they are well aware that with the curve on diversion and all the concerns we have had about traffic backup and the fact that. Riverfront place has also been recently approved. The applicant is aware of all the projects that are in the pipeline and to design and do their studies accordingly. So overall, I believe considering the location of the site and. Prime frontage on Clinton River, the project that they have proposed is, is a good one. Yes, there is some challenge with the fact that it's not a true mixed use, which the river's edge ambition. But the property does have its challenges with, partly located in the floodplain. And maybe the applicant can also provide a market study in order to justify why residential use is more desired than. An office residential type of thing for this property.
Mr. Mayor, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, my first reaction, you know, again, looking at like, like Christian said is, you know, like those townhouses look nice. So, and I think, you know, those are popular. You know, I think some of the issues that, you know, we'll have to wrestle with both at the planning commission and the city council is. You know, this is another project right after the Riverwalk project. Now that, I know these are mutually exclusive, but you know, this isn't done in a vacuum. So, so that's an issue. I think the size of the apartment building. You know, could be an issue. How does that, you know, I think we've seen some imaging on how does it look coming from the road? Yeah, I think, I, I think you might have mentioned that you were working on that, you know, kind of to see. You know, that, that will be interesting. You know, we don't want some huge. I apologize, my next door neighbor is like cutting the grass right near my window. I don't know if you can hear that or not.
Can't hear.
Okay, thank you. It's like, wow. I live in the old part of town. The houses are close to you, so. So, you know, the issue of how big that, that is, I, I, I'm looking at it. You know, that's going to be, you know, something I'm going to, you know, be interested in. You know, as Mr. Gassen said, you know, the apartment part to me is less attractive than the townhouses. And, and again, that's, you know, your business plan is, is your business plan. You know, traffic i- is going to be an issue. You know, and I, I think. You know, on, on that side of town, it's, you know, not going to be a particularly popular thing. Again, that doesn't mean I won't vote for something that I think is a good project. But I mean, those are kind of some of my concerns. You know, and then when we, if you get, if you bring it back, you know, the materials and, and, and all that. You know, thing, you know, I like to think those are up to speed. You know, another question I think will be with all the cost of building going up. You know, do you think you'd be able to work that in with these higher costs and stuff? So I mean, all, all, all these issues that I'm sure you've thought of, but you know, those are kind of my concerns. Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a, that's been an eyesore down there for a long, long time. You know, I've lived in the city a long time and I think they used to have homeless people, you know, down there. So obviously anything, you know, improving that property, I, I think is a good thing. So those are cuts, so those are some of my concerns. Hopefully will be addressed, you know, if you choose to come back here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Dennis, I'm sorry. We do have a caller, Jane Turner, to comment about this project.
Hey, hello, Jane.
Hi, how are you? Who am I speaking with?
This is Dennis McGee, the chairman, and we welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you, Dennis. It's taken me a long time to get there.
Well, you made it in your, you're loud and clear, so why don't you go ahead and speak?
Okay, I sort of missed the spot about the, the floodplain. Can you see what they were doing to avoid the floodplain?
Gentlemen, can you respond?
Sure, all construction will be out of the floodplain. We're respecting the elevations and the volume of water that has to be. You know, maintained if there is a, you know, a hundred year flood. So everything will be per proper engineering documentation approved by all the governing agencies. So we're not building anything in the floodplain at all. There's also a floodway there that also has to be respected.
From the last time you presented this?
Pardon me?
What's different from the last time you presented this?
We've acquired.
Plane then?
We've acquired two other parcels of land. And the amount of water for the floodplain is much larger in this plan than the previous one. The previous one had very small detention and this has quite, half the site is given for, to maintain that. That floodway and floodplain area.
Jane, has that answered your question?
Yes, but I have several more.
Go, go right ahead.
Main one, the main one that I brought up the last time. It wasn't adequately answered was how did this become a hundred South Street? I grew up at one thirty-five and one eleven South Street. And one hundred South Street was where the credit union is now. So how did this become one hundred South Street? When diversion, always on the west side of the bridge, has always been diversion?
I don't know, Nick, Nick or Blaine, can you explain?
I can answer that. So I agree with her a hundred percent. We call the county, why has this been like this forever? They have no answer.
How it hasn't been like this forever?
Yeah, well, it's, it's been on their old gov website as South Street forever. So I don't, I don't know what other people called it, but it doesn't make any sense to me either. But that's the address that is in the Oakland County government. It's up to the government, it's up to the county, not us.
The county assigns the addresses, don't they? The city doesn't have any.
It was at South Street and diversion on the. East side where diversion comes down through the cut through from Rochester Road. That was a hundred South Street. How did it end up west of the bridge?
I, I think what we can tell you is that we will try again to resolve that with Oakland County. Because they control addresses and we.
I think somebody went in to make it a little more appealing than diversion. That's my guesstimate. Okay. Now, anybody who has driven diversion. Knows that that curve is dangerous. You've already re-approved, what was it, a six-story apartment building with God knows how many apartment.
No, that's, that's not approved. That was, that was strictly a concept that was discussed. And it does not appear that that's going forward.
It was approved.
Oh, you're talking north of the river, the rivers, the, the.
First Street and Walnut.
Yes, yes.
That was approved, correct?
I can tell you that, that is. I can tell you that, that is going to be one of the burdens of this proposed development. They're going to have to satisfy our sustainability grid. And one of the principal problems on that grid is that it, it requires that traffic be competently addressed. And they don't have any information.
I've seen those traffic studies, and there, there apparently nobody has driven that curve.
Okay.
You have an apart, you have an apartment or a condo complex on the south side of the bridge that I don't know how many apartments or condos were going in there that's part of Rochester Hills. That's just going to add to congestion. If this complex wants to go through, they're going to have to broaden that curve. Either that or you put in a, an island or something to have any of you, I'm asking, have any of you driven that curve around 35 miles an hour and ended up in the lane that you were supposed to be?
We will, obviously, be very sensitive to that, Jane. And, you know, we can't salvage tonight, but your, your point is well taken, as it was with the river's edge. They are going to have to very well and clearly explain the issues of traffic that this site could generate.
Yes. Okay. Now, they were talking about pedestrian traffic. Now, if any of you have gone down diversion, on the west side of the bridge that's there, there is a sidewalk across the bridge. There is no sidewalk south of the bridge. And that goes, if you extend that, it goes to the bridge and there's no place to put a sidewalk. If you have to cross the street, basically you're crossing in that curve. Now, the, the business complex that's on diversion has a sidewalk running to the river that goes nowhere. How are you going to get pedestrian traffic across there?
They are taking notes and they'll be, Jim, do you have some response to that?
Well, I think it's a very good point. I appreciate you bringing it up. From a planning point of view, we're, we're thrilled that there is a sidewalk that's set on the west side of the bridge. This property, other than the Van Horn side, really isn't developed currently. But our plan is, is to extend that sidewalk all along the west side of diversion, as well as connecting to.
To the South Hill Bridge?
I'm sorry?
To the South Hill Bridge that you'd run into a cement abatement?
No, they're going to extend it to their driveway.
Correct.
To their driveway? And how are they going to cross the street to the other sidewalk on the east side of that, of diversion?
You know, that, that would ultimately be up to, to the, the road commissioner, the county generally. We don't promote crossing mid-block. I would, I would think the safest way to cross the street at that point would be to go up further north up to the, to the first cross street and then to cross east going towards Main Street.
North, where's the first cross street? So if you go up to First Street and you cross over diversion to the east side of diversion and walk down pit to the path, how are you going to get over the bridge? There's no path there. You have to go in the road.
Well, and again, that, that would all be part of this, is that, that, you know, we're, I don't believe, but I know that these drawings, I don't believe you're, you're on the computer, but we have shown drawings tonight. And they're, they are submitted with the city and, and these are what we would consider conceptual drawings, but right from day one, from a conceptual point of view, we know that extending those sidewalks is an important thing. We obviously want to do it safely. But we do think that this is a great opportunity to extend the sidewalk on the west side, across this site and tie it into the bridge.
It goes nowhere. You're going to run into the bridge.
I, I don't think, Jane, they're proposing to go south of their driveway.
Well, I think you, you bring up a great point that we'll certainly take a very close look at as we get further in designs. I think it's really very good point. It's all about pedestrian access.
You look into that. The other thing is that the gentleman who was discussing this, I don't know if he was the designer or the architect or whoever, said that he wanted to make a Chicago feel about downtown Rochester. I'm sorry. There is no way in God's green earth do I want a Chicago feel in the home that I've called here for 65 years.
Jane, this is Jim Eppen. I'm the, the land planner and designer of that. When I, when I referenced the Chicago feel, it was specific to the architecture of the townhomes that we're proposing and the concepts that we, we shared with the
Yeah.
community tonight. And what I meant, what I meant by that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was the wrong analogy. This is a two point some mile square city. I don't need any more traffic. I don't need any more apartments. There is no way that you can rent all those things in this community at this time.
So anything else, Jane?
No, I'm pretty much full of myself right now. But I hope you take my, first of all, I want to find out how 100 South Street became east of, west of the bridge. That's the question I've had for the last time they presented this.
We'll have to see if we can find somebody at Oakland County who might be able to untangle that mystery.
Well, could somebody there let me know what you find out?
Yes, we will do that.
I'm sure somebody down at the city hall knows who I am.
Well, thank you for calling in, and we appreciate it.
Thank you for listening to my rant, but.
No, it wasn't a rant, and these things are important. I'm, I'm glad you took the time to, to call and to express your, your thoughts. I mean, these are the folks, they're going to have to come forward. And we want them to know what you think, you and the other residents. So thank you again for calling and stay tuned.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Good night. Sienna, anyone else?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So gentlemen, I hope that you feel well informed by the commissioners and some of the residents, and I hope that gives you a lot of guidance.
Um, well, thank you. One, one question I have is there, are we going down the right path doing special exception? This is, this is the process, we're following the right process in developing this parcel.
Vidya?
The correct terminology would be special project. Special exception is the same as special land use, so there can be a slight confusion. That is actually the only pathway to go forward at this time. The other choice would be possibly asking for rezoning of the parcel in conformance to the master plan. That would be another, other option would be if special projects is one pathway, the other option would be to request a rezoning of this parcel to the master plan designation, which at this time reads as river's edge, can ask for a rezoning, and after rezoning, develop the site as a principal common use or a special exception, which is a special language, not a special project.
But Vidya, I might have to correct you that, that river's edge does not exist. It's not been on the zoning map. We have created that district. You have to go to RM1, RM2. So until we create that district, you can't rezonate to that. It doesn't exist.
Nick, that's not been adopted by the council, has it?
That's correct.
I, slight correction, there might be some, might have to get some opinion over here because the district was adopted by the council. The zoning map amendment was not adopted, and the master plan was adopted. So the river's edge technically does exist in our master plan, and the text of it was adopted. The zoning map was not adopted. So there might be, we are in a, we are in a strange position at this time. The district exists in the master plan and as a text, but not in a map. So we would need a legal opinion to say whether it can or cannot be done. I don't think it can be completely overruled, but I would defer to Attorney Krot to look into that a little bit more. That might still.
I mean, until you do the zoning map, nothing exists. We, John Jackson came and lectured us on that. We'll deal with that.
So your questions are, is valid, and we need to untangle that.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you everyone for your time tonight.
Well, thanks for coming in, and I, I hope we were helpful to you. I suspect we were. And stay close. We hope to see you back again. So stay close to Nick and Vidya, and I think we'll, we'll be able to move forward here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
Number seven is miscellaneous. Any members of the commission have any miscellaneous matters?
I just have a quick comment.
Yes.
Just wanted to let folks know that the Great Oaks apartment has not completed any shielding of the lights as of this point, so. Apparently for, for weeks now, they've been working with the fire chief on some sort of plan, I guess, as to how to go about that, but still waiting, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, number eight is public comment. Sienna, do you have any other, anyone waiting to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Number nine is upcoming agenda items for June 7, 2021.
Yes. So we have a public hearing for the consideration of a site plan and special exception for 407 South Main Street. I think it'll be reworded a little differently than it is in your packet. Also, we will have Greg Snyder come back for amendments to his originally approved site plan for the 1205 Main Street, the brownstones.
You know what the nature of the amendment is?
Chairman, if you'd like, I'll let you know. What happened is, he submitted all his plans, got engineering approved, submitted his building plans, and Randy got ahold of their architect and said, you made a little mistake here, called, because there are condos and there are duplexes, the building code was changed two years ago to say that there's a presumed lot line between two separated buildings that don't have fire ratings. There's two instances on the site that you guys had a five, you approved a five foot separation. It's got to be six inches farther on each side, a total of a foot. He needs to move those to six feet instead of five to comply with the building code. And then, which just, and he has room without having designed change any building, he just slides them over six inches each way and has fair weighted walls. Everything else is fine, and you'll write a letter. We do not have the authority to move the six inch sides. He's got to go back, you want to do it one night? He wants to break ground, and it's his architect that made the mistake. He's very frustrated with his architect, but you've got to clean that up in order for him to have compliance, and then Randy could issue the building.
Thank you. It sounds like you've made a good selection with your building official.
Extremely good.
That's, that's great to hear.
That's it, no other changes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I just had a quick question. I didn't mean to interrupt. If, if there's still other issues, I just had one final comment. I guess I should have raised under miscellaneous, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Presuming that we go in person at the next meeting, for purposes of public comment, for purposes of, you know, presentations, would those be in person as well, or is it going to be a hybrid? I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
So originally, we have, we stated that this will be hybrid meeting where the board would actually be in person as far as any residents who felt comfortable coming to city hall they can, but the option for them to be on Zoom will be available. Additionally, the staff, just myself, Blaine, Nick, Vidya, and Maureen, they can remain virtual as well. Unless Stuart or Blaine make any changes, considering all of the news today, I'll keep you all posted. But as far as the actual commissioners, you all will need to be at city hall.
Okay, thank you.
Blaine, if you have something to add.
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll just add that, again, is the requirement an attorney crack can, can jump in as well. So for the Open Meetings Act, the, if it's the city council or the planning commission, or if it's one of our other public bodies that they're meeting, they need to be in person. You will provide procedures regarding, as the mayor talked about at the beginning, with the fully vaccinated are not required to wear a mask, always could, could still do that, that's fine. However, if you're not vaccinated plus the two weeks, then you would need to, to wear a mask. There's probably going to be a few staff members that will be present, but not everybody has to. We would like to keep the social distancing and some measures in, in place to allow the public to be there, you know. Might have me like just, I'm right up here in my office. However, for the city council meeting, I will, will be at, at the, in the room. Attorney Krot, you know, for, for this one might choose to be remote. However, for like our city council meeting, along with the clerk, the three of us will be the staff members supporting the city council meeting. So there are, there'll be some, you know, I guess, adjustments. We'll have areas that's audience, kind of for the, for the public, and we'll actually get you guys a diagram. I'm meeting with the mayor next week on, on the setup of how the, the meeting room space will look.
It's got to be very hard to try to track what's occurring, and we, we wish you the best with that. It changes by the hour. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, the old law was you could do a hybrid where some of us could be at the, at city hall, and some of the board members could, could not be. But the new legislation took away our right for hybrid, so all of us have to be there. Nobody else has to be there. So it's just the board members, unfortunately, have to be there. Where before there was hybrid options and you could phone in from, we, we hadn't gotten that far yet, but we had the opportunity to do that. Now the legislature has, has mixed that for now.
Well, we'll survive. We've survived this long, we'll survive. Any other business?
I was just going to say, so, so lobby your Republican legislator if you want some flexibility in terms of these meetings.
Okay, good idea. Good idea. Okay, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in June.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.